I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T Universe, and the City of Gaston U2. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Thack.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Reverend Larry Furman to come and lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, I thank you for this day. Thank you that you love us, provided a way for us to know you personally. Thank you, Lord, for our city, for those who serve here in various positions. Thank you, Father, for each citizen and the part that each one plays in the activities that go on in our city. And I pray, Father, for your wisdom, your blessing, for this meeting and for all that's done in Gaston, that we may honor you and be helpful in the lives of others. We pray, thanking you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the work session and city council meeting that was held September 27.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of September the 23rd through the 29th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, we have none, but at this time, we are asking Mr. Larry Furman and Ms. Charlotte Nolan to come forward for a special presentation.
I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity. I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to present this portrait to the City of Gaston. And I want to introduce Larry Furman, who will be making the presentation on behalf of our family.
As she indicated, on behalf of the family of David Nolan, I'm pleased to make this presentation to the City of Gaston. There are some of you perhaps who do not know David as well as others, so allow me to say just a few remarks, make a few remarks about him. David Nolan was a man who loved God, first of all, with all of his heart. He loved his family unconditionally. He was a friend to all who would allow him to be their friend. And he loved, he loved this city. And he proved that love. Because of his love for Gaston, he entered politics in 1986 and was blessed to serve this city as the first mayor under the mayor council form of government. He loved serving every citizen of this city. They proved that love by elevating persons from all walks of life, from every part of this city, to positions of leadership, and so much was accomplished during his tenure as mayor that still are affecting positively this city. He was pleased to have been instrumental in establishing new business procedures that allowed for more accountability for the city's resources. And one of those new ideas or one of those new procedures was the implementation of automated garbage pickup. Not only was this more cost-effective, but it was also safer and a quicker way to provide service for our city. And he talked to me about the fact that as they were planning this and talking about doing this, he decided that one day he needed to know what was going on and how the city workers were implementing what they were doing then. And so he got on the back of one of these trucks one day, and he worked one of the routes one day, and he came back saying, "I understand that this is not the safest way for our workers to work, and this is not the most productive way for our city to operate this particular service." And so the plans were made and finalized to provide this service for our city. And so, and most cities today of any size are using a similar service. Mr. Peter Gregerson, who was David's friend and my friend, talked often about how David worked with him hand in hand as they established the program of the All-American Program, All-American Cities Program. Just a few, just a few of the things that were accomplished by this man as he served this city of Gaston. And on behalf, on behalf of his family who are here, and you see how he was elected mayor because he has so much family. But he has family and friends who are here, and on behalf of them, and I present to you, I'm pleased to present to you and on their behalf, this portrait of Mayor David Jackson Nolan to the City of Gaston. And this portrait will be placed on the Wall of Honor that recognizes former mayors of our city. A special thanks to Ms. Nolan and to her family, and a special thanks to those of you who continue to provide loving service to our city. God bless you.
Thank you. As the Nolan family are leaving, we just want to say that we appreciate you all and we thank you for allowing Mayor Nolan to be a part of the city. I knew him as a businessman as far as working with glass and working with windows. In fact, he even been to my house to put in windows. So I know that he was a good man. I know he was a kind man, and I know that he worked with everybody. So we just want to say we appreciate you and we thank you for offering the portrait to the city.
I thought I saw the man from Verizon out there at pre-council. I thought I did. Is it David?
Yeah, the consultant.
Yeah, I thought I saw him.
I think he just walked in and sat down, yeah.
We'll continue with our agenda. We have unfinished business. We have none today. A resolution that's authorizing a special use permit to Verizon Wireless. This is for installation, and so we'll let...
Jeff Bass.
Okay, come and introduce yourself. We haven't seen anybody from Verizon in a good while.
Well, I'm actually with CMS.
I'm sorry, our consultant. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am. What we have before us is a resolution here for Verizon. They are currently offering service on this tower. This is a 95-foot monopole. They currently have six antennas on this tower at 94 feet. They're proposing to add six additional antennas, so this is a definitely going to be a technology upgrade. It's going, should boost, possibly double the service in that area. They'll be doubling the amount of antennas. So it will change the aesthetics a little bit, but it's not going to change the height of the tower. So we'll go from six antennas to 12 antennas. CMS has reviewed this application, and it is our recommendation for approval. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Jeff, I have a question, not about this location specifically, but are you able to discuss other areas of the city and Verizon?
I could try.
Where I live on, in Country Club on Wild Haven Circle, I don't get a good, and not just me, but I don't get a good reception, and it baffles me that I can be in the heart of the city and not get good Verizon reception. Is there any way to address that issue? There's probably other pockets of the city that don't, that do not receive good coverage.
So a lot of that will have to do with, of course, anytime you have a lot of foliage, but in the city, you're not having that. But as that signal goes out and kind of blankets, as things go up and down, or you have buildings, anything that can obstruct that service, and then you've got the amount of Verizon, if you're on Verizon, other customers who are in that area, because you only have so much bandwidth on each antenna that's up there. So if it's flooded in that area with a bunch of Verizon customers, then that also kind of throttles it back. But again, that goes more back toward the carrier themselves than actually CMS. But I hope as technology gets better and improves and they do these modifications, that it's going to help bring service up to, hopefully adequate to you in those areas. But other than that, I couldn't tell you, as long as they're not, if they're adding more antennas, then you'll get hopefully better service.
Okay, that just brings about a redundancy maybe of the signal, that the pipe's bigger, so to speak, and it can hold more activity. Because there's not a lot of blocking from Fifth Street down to my house. It's pretty flat. There are buildings, but they're probably two-story buildings, and there's some trees. Does the, do trees have a...
Foliage, anytime foliage, just like if you had your TV antenna, you know, on your house back in the day, if you had trees up, it would block that signal. But as technology gets better, how they distribute that service will be better for us, I hope. You know, they amaze me every day on what they've coming up with. But, you know, as far as that goes, it's really hard to say, but when you have more customers in the area, that also takes away. So let's say you only have, use a number of 100, and that's just using for, you know, kicks and giggles, but you've got 100 ability to have 100 people on that at one antenna. Well, if there's 99 people in that area that's on the antenna, then, you know, it really floods that. But as technology gets better, hopefully that won't be quite the same. It'll be able to, you know, supply better, more service.
In your role as our consultant, do you have data that can, I mean, I go there every day, that's where I live, I'm back and forth. I don't know if there's a tower down that way. Is Fifth Street the closest tower to...
I'll have to check on that. David definitely knows better about that than I do. He's been doing it longer and with me, I'm in and out of Gaston, but he's definitely got a hand in every city, a lot, a firmer grasp to know, but I couldn't tell you if there's another antenna closer or not.
I didn't know, and I haven't seen David in a while. Is he doing okay?
He's been busy. Oh, he's been doing well.
We've missed him for the last couple of years, I think.
Well, you know, COVID slowed everything down.
Sure it did.
And so even having, you know, I guess, workers go out and work on towers and do things, it throttled them back as well. So now everybody's wide open, and he's, like he was telling me the other day, I got 200-something emails yesterday. I don't know how you read 200 emails in a day, much less answer that many. So he's got us worker bees out trying to handle some of this stuff.
All right, well, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next resolution is amending the...
Madam President, I don't think we can, we didn't actually consider that one, I don't believe.
Okay. We, okay.
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution amending the employee handbooks for the fire, police, public works, administrative, clerical, and management employees. The Chair will...
Madam President, I'd like us to entertain a motion to table this item for 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Madam President, if I may, offer some comments.
All right.
So the comments that I'm going to make, I'm making not just as a member of the council, but as the Chair of the Finance Committee. The issue of this handbook language has been a lingering issue for a number of years, probably better than 10 years. And it didn't just present itself. It was actually identified by a third-party consultant as an opportunity for the city to align itself with federal law. There's also some history as to why the loophole exists to begin with. And so, an issue as important and as critical as this, in our opinion, requires some research. And we want to make sure that we conduct adequate and ample due diligence before passing an issue, passing a resolution, or making any changes to the handbook. So there are a number of things that are going to have to be looked at. Now, if you're asking yourself, why did this council and this administration determine that they wanted to consider it? Now, I can tell you that there are a number of things. There is, you know, you've often heard us refer to it as a loophole, and there is indeed a loophole. We are hemorrhaging overtime expense through this provision, to the tune of roughly 20, over $21,000 a week. Now, you may ask yourself, well, aren't you short a few people in some of these critical departments? Well, we are, but that doesn't explain it all. And that expense for one department in particular exceeds $1.1 million. And so that, from a taxpayer perspective and from a city council perspective, from a fiscal responsibility perspective, deserves some review. Offsetting the expense of a brand-new holiday, we just took on a new holiday, and that is going to present itself as an expense. And so, one of the things that we have to do in this current labor market and in this current budget season is we have to be diligent about seeking out offsets to any new expenses. I mean, you don't want somebody up here that's spending blindly and not considering some offsets. Managing a personnel expense that's near 70%. In 2011, we worked very hard to get that expense down around 65%, only to buy our way back up to near 70%. And, you know, when you compare us to a number of municipalities across the state in terms of that expense, we're out of line. And so there's an opportunity, again, to study that additionally, to see what can be done. And then this year, we, the city took on a very complicated set of budget issues in a very difficult labor market, in an attempt to take care of those people that are currently here, those that are senior relative to service, and to create a scenario where people would actually want to come work for the city. We wanted to create a scenario that would allow people to be interested in us coming off the street. Very complicated budget. You're not going to make everybody happy with those, in those three groups, but attempts were made. So again, this is a great opportunity to allow for some additional study. I understand that the Personnel Department is actually conducting some comp and benefit analysis to determine where the city stands with a lot of these things. And 30 days from now, there will be an opportunity for the council and the administration at that time to consider this issue once again. And so, again, I think anything as important as this deserves ample study and ample analysis, and that's the action that we're taking today. Thank you.
We voted.
President, may I make a statement?
Okay.
I just wanted to say thank you to Councilman Williams for suggesting that we table this for 30 days. After speaking or hearing from many members of law enforcement, first responders in general, and city employees, you know, the challenge I think we have here, as Councilman Williams said, is we have a very, very complex process for paying our employees and our first responders throughout the city. And I think that although we obviously have issues with overtime, I think most of those people would tell you that they're playing the game that was laid before them. And I think the challenge is that some of these folks in these positions say that these opportunities to utilize vacation days or holidays or things like that the way they do was offered to them years ago as in lieu of pay raises in some situations. They said, "Well, we'll allow you to use this if you agree not to take a pay raise this year, or if you agree not to do this, or if you're willing to wait on this." So I appreciate everybody being willing to be diligent and really look at this and make sure we get it right, because I think as a city, the last thing we want to do is hand out pay raises to our employees and our first responders, and then make a change that would ultimately take that money right back out of their pocket. And I don't think that was the intent of anybody involved here. So it is a very complex situation, and I appreciate the Finance Director and everybody involved for being willing to do their due diligence and make sure we get this one right. Thank you, Councilman Williams.
Madam President.
Yes.
Can I ask, how long has it been since the handbook had been changed? How many years? Does anyone know?
2004.
2004? That's when they changed it?
18 years ago.
That's all I had.
And the problem that I have with it, and I've stated it during the Finance Committee meeting, I used to say we can't negotiate with the unions, but I'm pro-union, and I think we should at least speak with them and talk with them about this issue. And I have no problem with most of what's in the, changing the handbook, because I think if you're going to take a sick day and then be able to get overtime, I don't think that's correct. And I think when I was working in the Police Department, if we took a sick day, you didn't get paid overtime. You had to work some hours before you can get that overtime money. So that definitely need to be looked at. So only thing I ask the new council and mayor is to at least go speak with the union. You know, I've been told it's illegal for them to negotiate because there's a right to work state, thank the Republicans for that, but anyway, you should at least sit down and speak with them, because I was one of the union president when we negotiated the last handbook. So at least give them that respect. Thank you.
Madam President. And chime in here just a little bit. I agree with what's been said. I think it's wise and prudent for us to take a step back, take a breath, and be prudent in what we're doing, have a full review. I'm in favor of an outside third party such as Auburn University. I said this last week, I said it in my campaign material. The handbook you've just heard hasn't been changed since 2004, 18 years ago, as are a lot of things. We're a little bit antiquated in certain areas, and so we have to be responsive to changes in our society with the labor force. We also have to be responsible to the taxpayers, and I agree with Councilman Williams, and I appreciate him tabling this. We can't just spend, spend, spend. There has to be some offsets, or there has to be some balance. And so I think what we need to do, step back and look at it, and study it with sober minds, and make sure we're making a good decision, let's get it right, and let's be as even-handed as we can be for everybody, for everybody in the room, for all employees, and for all the taxpayers. So I look forward to taking that task on as a council in the next 30 days, and let's see what we can do. We hear the comments, and we certainly have a heart for our employees, and we want to do what's best for the entire city. So we thank everybody for your patience, and just, and we will be working hard to make the right decisions as we move forward. Thank you, Madam President.
We did vote, yes, ma'am.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing agreement with Fine Getty and Associates LLC. And this is to monitor all state legislative and administrative activities relating to the legislation or proposed legislation of direct interest to the City of Gaston for one year term beginning October 1, and the amount is $7,100 per month. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. I just want to make one point. I plan to vote no on this, but I'm going to tell you why. Last week, if y'all recall, I requested that maybe it would be appropriate for us as a council to receive a summary of the activity that Fine and Getty participated in each year or quarterly or something. And I was told last week that they do provide a summary of their activity to the mayor's office, but that that summary is confidential and that the council does not have access to that and cannot review it. And for that matter, for that reason, I plan to vote no on it. I think there's, I just don't think it's right that we don't have access to what our consultants are doing in Montgomery as a body. I just, I don't think that's correct, so that's why I'm going to vote no on it. I just wanted to make myself clear on that.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing agreement with Rafa House, and this is for 10 beds units for city prisoners to participate in the treatment program, and the amount is $20,000 for fiscal year 2023. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Clerk, will you take the vote? Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
No business, we have none. At this time, we are asking Mr. Craig Scott to come for Community Unity Thanksgiving.
Madam President, Council, good morning.
Good morning.
And I'm Craig Scott, Director of the Gaston Public Library. Now, I'm going to be talking to you about two events that are coming up, but these are not related to the library. I'm going to bait you a little bit. I'll be back next week, and I'll be talking about quite a big event that we're excited about at the library coming up on October 20, and I'll be back next week to talk to you about that. The first event that I'd like to address along with Buster is Community Thanksgiving. You all have assisted, supported, been there, you know what Community Thanksgiving's all about. It's the largest Thanksgiving dinner on Thanksgiving Day in the state of Alabama, and we also think we are the largest, one of the top five largest in the country. Last year, we served 8,784 plates. So, and those are dine-in, or to-go, or we have deliveries out to the community. So Thanksgiving is coming, and we'd like to ask your support again. And the board, I think I mentioned last year, we grew up, we now have a board, and moving ahead, our budget this year is $35,000. Right now, we have a nice carryover from last year of $8,000, but we're starting our fundraising right now, and again, ask you for your support.
Buster, if you want to make... Well, this is a surprise. I didn't know I was going to be called, but I got involved, matter of fact, before I even moved back. I moved back in 2008. And the reason that I got involved was I have a tendency to get involved and volunteer for any number of events, and this was a very, very, very positive thing, that it not only affected the people who attended, but it affected relationship throughout the city and throughout the county. And you just heard, this is a state event, and it's a city event, and it's well-known throughout the state. So I think as we have gone on, and I would classify this as a, one of the better city events that I have been involved in. So I think you look at this not only as an organizational thing, but as a city event that must continue on. So look into those pocketbooks and come up with the money, because it's going to be needed. As you say, we fed 8,000 last year with the COVID and everything. As you say, we fed 8,000 last year, and with the COVID and everything else that's going on, it'll probably exceed that this year. And we're always looking for volunteers.
Thank you, Buster. And that's a very good point on volunteers. We'll expect to see all of you in your capacities, different capacities now, on Thanksgiving Day to help us out. Thank you, Buster.
Christie?
Second event that I'd like to talk about, is about the Love Center. And that is one of our two homeless shelters that serve homeless folks overnight. There are only two overnight shelters in a five-county area, with the Love Center being one. I joined the board of the Love Center a year ago, and wanted to get involved because of my involvement at the library with homeless folks that are coming in every day. But I joined the board of the Love Center thinking everything was on the up and up, and everything was great. Myself and other board members soon learned that that organization was one of the worst-run organizations I've ever been involved in. So, this past July, we blew it up. And the Love Center is now going to be known as the Charles C. House. "Charles C." goes back to our founding, our founder, and we're going to be having a ribbon-cutting grand opening of the new Charles C. House in the weeks to come. But the Love Center had become a boarding house, with folks staying in there one year, two year, and there was nothing going, there was nothing going for them. There were no programs, they had a nice roof over their heads, they had food, but they weren't moving ahead. And so, consequently, the Love Center had become drug-infested. We were visited almost daily by the Police Department and the Fire Department to take care of issues that were going on. And I'm very glad to say, in the last couple of months, I think we've had them there one time. So, a big changeover has been going on. With that as an introduction, we hired Kristi Turner Richards as our new Executive Director in early July, and she has done a masterful job, a wonderful job, in helping get this organization turned around. We just had Church of the Highlands there this past weekend to help spruce up our front entrance, and it looks a whole much better. If you've come in the house, if you're ever in the Love Center before, you won't recognize the place. It has all been changed from top down, including who the residents are. We've dealt with situations, we've moved some of our residents to other facilities that are better suited for them, and we are moving ahead in the right direction now. So, as a board member, I'm very proud of what's being done at the Charles C. House. With that said, on Saturday, we have a big fundraiser for us. You all helped us out last year with our first run fundraiser called Corks and Cornhole. It'll be held at the Mariela Winery out in Hoax Bluff, and it's a cornhole tournament. Lots of folks are going to be there, and again, we'll ask for your support.
Thank you. I didn't say, are there any other board reports, committee reports? If not, we'll have remarks by our council members. Councilman Reed?
Yes, I just want to say that I'm proud to be a member of this council and accept the portrait of David Nolan, because he was a good friend of mine, and he did a lot of good work here. And pertaining to this Love Center, '94 to '98, I was in a controversy about that. I'll just echo the fact that I thought it was poorly run. It was unbelievable what was going on, as far as the people and number of guys who's hanging around them. But I pushed it, pushed it to a point, and Bob Eccles asked me a question one day. He said, well, Ben, I know they're bad, but had you rather be on the front porch at the Love Center or out here on the street? And it's come to fruition, only. So, they did do that part back then. They held it together, and she persevered until y'all took it over. Thank goodness y'all did, and I appreciate you.
Councilman Cannon?
I don't have anything today.
Councilman Wilson?
I don't have anything, Madam President, thank you.
Councilman Baugh?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to echo Councilman Reed's comment about David Nolan. David Nolan's been a friend of mine for probably most of my life. We attended church together for many years, and was just always a great guy, prince of a fella. In my first term, he would offer me advice, and was always said, hey, if you need anything, just call me, I'd be glad to help in any way. So, his wife, Charlotte, who everybody calls affectionately Pug, is just a dear friend, and they're good people, and it's an honor to be here, to have that portrait presented while we're here. And just remember the family as they remember their David that we knew as our mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, Madam President, I have a couple announcements. This first one is from EMA. They're holding a flu clinic at North Glencoe Baptist Church today. It started at 8:00 a.m. and it'll go to 3:00 p.m. That's the Flu Clinic at North Glencoe Baptist Church. And I have one other announcement, if I can get to. Okay, they will be giving away, this is the Draker Patrick 21 Kids Foundation, they will be doing an education on the coronavirus vaccine. They will not be doing a vaccine clinic, but they will be giving away 60 $25 gift cards for gas at the venue on October 15th, starting at 11:00 a.m. It's first come, first served, and they will give you literature about the vaccine. That's the only announcements I have, but I just want to say thank you to District 3, thank you to the city. If no emergencies arise, this will be my last council meeting. It's been an honor and a pleasure to represent District 3 and the city as a whole. I wish nothing but the best for the new mayor and the new city council, because if they fail, the city fails. So, we all have to get behind them, for our city's sake, our employees. And we don't see eye to eye all the time, but I appreciate you all, and I love you all, and stay safe to our police officers. And like I told y'all before, when I spoke with you, it's the perception. We have to change the perception of the police officers. That's the main reason why we cannot get people to come and be a part of our Police Department. This new generation, they're just different. You know, they see what's going on, and they just don't want to be a part of it. And I understand, we had one officer graduate from the academy, came and worked one shift and quit. So, we have to change that perception. And we still have to give you a better raises, too. Money goes along with it, but continue doing what you're doing, no matter what's going on up here, because you're there to protect the citizens. And like I've always said, that job is a calling, it's just not like a regular job. So, thank you for what you do, and let's try to change the perception so we can get more police officers. Thank you.
Councilman Worthy?
Thank you, Madam President. To the incoming mayor and council, I wish you all the misery and grief and heartache, and I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. And this won't be my last one, I've still got a few left, but no, I will miss you, Councilman Worthy, and wish you the best in future endeavors, for sure. You know, Ben, it's funny that you mentioned the Love Center. Now, I've been, you know, my experience has been a little different. You know, I've just kind of supported them in principle over the years, probably much like you have. But when I worked in community development many moons ago, you know, many people don't know that I worked for the city for about a year, right after graduating from college. And I got a phone call to go out, it's the first time I've ever talked about this publicly. I got a phone call to go out there. And apparently, there had been a report that in the part of the old Sears building that they were using, that there was some signage out there that I might find interesting. So, I went out, they were a public service agency that we funded through community development, and I walked out, and for the first time in my life, at age 24, for the first time in my life, I saw colored women and white men. First time in my, first time I'd ever seen it in person. I watched the documentaries and the footage, and I see all that stuff just like everybody else on television, but in person, first time I'd ever seen it. It was a surreal moment. And I had to have a very tense conversation with the Executive Director at that time about why she couldn't receive federal money and have that where minority and female and poor people were having, you know, in an area that they were having access. And it took her about two hours to get rid of, because she knew what was at stake. But it just speaks to how far we've come. And it lends itself to another point I'll make about David Nolan. David Nolan also took the opportunity to hire probably the city's only black male exec, mayor's executive assistant. Stafford Rouser was his executive assistant at the time. Not very many people know that, but he took an opportunity to put him in a very important role. And he served in that role, obviously, through the duration of his tenure. So, you know, it just kind of lends itself to why it's important to know your history, okay? Why it's important for us to understand our history, so that we don't fight battles over, so that we don't end up having to rehash old issues. So, and it's also, kind of, it also lends itself to why it's important to be thorough when you make big decisions. So, I'm off my soapbox. I want to invite everyone that's available and has any interest to come out to an appreciation event that's going to be held for me, and also a birthday party, by the way, because Thursday's my birthday. So, it's an appreciation event that'll be held for me at New Liberty Tabernacle of Praise in East Gaston, right off of East Broad Street, at 6:00 p.m. until about 8:00 or 9:00, I guess. I was voluntold that I needed to be there, so I'm going to be there, and I'm excited. It's not often that you get a chance to serve as an elected official, and people call you and say, hey, why aren't you doing some kind of event? You've served 12 years, you should be doing something. And I said, well, I never really looked at it that way. I mean, you know, I wasn't even sure they liked me, I don't know. I mean, and so, the feedback that I got immediately was, no, there's a lot of people that appreciate your hard work and your service. So, I'm just honored and humble by that fact. And now that I jinxed it, there might be three people there, but I mean, but I'm just, I really am excited and just honored by what's the opportunity that's been presented. And I look forward to that event. We'll have a chance to fellowship, and I'll get a chance to say thank you to everybody for the opportunity presented to me. So, that's all I have, Madam President.
And I jinxed that, are you going to have food?
I think there will be refreshments there.
Call for a motion to adjourn.